The five P M.
Councilmember Escovia?
Here.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Here.
Councilmember Stoya?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember Alaric D'Amico?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to communications from the mayor in this building, I think it is. Okay, thank you. Communication from the public and petitions.
Request from the Dunkirk Midget Football League to have their annual Dunkirk Midget Football Tag Days fundraiser on Saturday, August 20th, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. at the intersection of Central Avenue, Fifth Street, and on West Dodie Street near the firehouse.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, let's go to number two.
Request from the Dunkirk City School District for police coverage for the Dunkirk Senior High School 2022 varsity football season on September 9th and 23rd, and October 7th and 14th, from 7:00 p.m. till 10:00 p.m. arrival time at the discretion of police.
Any discussion, council?
Okay, here.
Good for that.
All right, sir.
Okay, number three.
Request from Elizabeth Naraway of the nonprofit organization Impact to hold a 5K run fundraiser along the waterfront on September 10th, 2022, at 9:00 a.m.
Any discussion, council?
I'd just like to see something a little more detailed on it, as to what they're going to do, timeframe, what they're going to need, and hoping they'll send something more once this is approved.
Okay.
And then they said, I read in the thing in here, they said there's two courses they could run.
Yeah, and we only have one. Yeah, so I don't, that's what I'm saying, I'm hoping.
At home, from years to years.
Yeah, we don't run that anymore, for destructive purposes.
Yes, you probably know that, that's the one and only.
The one we run is right along with from Old Broadway Park and back, that's the only one we offer.
Okay.
And I'm hoping they come forward with a better plan than what they've sent in.
You want me to facilitate that, also?
Yeah, would you please just contact them and ask them if they could give us some specific details on exactly what time, dates, we're going to have to have volunteers for the control, things of that sort.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay, number four, we hear again?
Number four, request from James Thomas Jr. of the Jehovah Witness to set up two mobile carts under the viaduct on Central Avenue and in the near future at local parks and the pier grounds.
Any discussion, council?
I do, there's no dates in there, they're just going to go at random and do whatever they feel like doing it, since they've given us some dates that they plan to do it. I mean, it's just that they could go and set up at any time, how are we supposed to know if they're going to be setting up when they're setting up?
Yeah, can you get a little more information possibly on what their plans would be?
There's nothing in their letter at all on it.
Yeah, get that one, we may want to look at table and down there until we get some more information. Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, number five.
Notice of claim from Marshall Methmuth of Fredonia for alleged damages to his car from manhole cover on Lake Shore Drive and South Serval Street on July 15, 2022.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, six.
Prior written notice from Elizabeth Campbell on a hazardous tree at 421 Park Avenue.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none.
Number seven, prior written notice from Ferdinand Tardy of 55 Lemming Street of a dangerous tree dropping branches near his living room window and in the streets near cars.
Any discussion?
Really, can you check to see if those are already on the list, Mike?
Yeah, just in, I thought I had a copy of the tree list, but we definitely will.
That's the first thing we do when we get these notices, like, check what we just saw on our list, and then we move them off sometimes based on what the law department says, so we don't consider these things to be adversary at all, and we appreciate, we appreciate the notice.
Thank you.
So, number nine?
Number eight, sir?
I'm sorry, number eight.
Last speaker permit request from the Lakeside Club to use a live band on August 13th and 14th, 2022, from 1:00 p.m. until 5:00 p.m. for their fundraiser.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, that was the one, sorry, I went, I missed the last one. If the residents there would like to know if they could make, move their bandstand farther away from the houses that are there.
Just funding that.
Chairman, there's only one neighborhood complaining.
Okay.
They've been around to the residents, one, they've offered a financial, whatever, to go away for the day, they're even turning their speakers toward the audience.
Okay.
I think they've already gone around to their neighbors, and they haven't signed something, too.
Uh, yeah, there's only one.
Yeah. Can I interrupt?
So, they turned in notice, notification of affected persons, and they have approximately five or six signatures from the closest residents to the Lakeside Club.
Again, I'll repeat, only one.
And we've been honored by that one.
Yeah, LuPaul Patty has spear in this, he just wanted me to let you know that he originally applied for the apartment of the 7th, and since then, they've been door-to-door and everything else, and there is only about one person who's against it.
That's certainly fair.
Well, I promised that I would bring it up, so I'm doing what I was asking.
That's why I was a big Lou, too, that's why I didn't bring it up again.
Yes, sir.
Last speaker permit request from Nathan Swanson to use multiple speakers and amplifiers for live music at the fairgrounds mini stage on September 17, 2022 during a music festival.
Any discussion, council? Okay, hearing none, let's go to the reports of standing committees, boards of commissions, councilwoman, let's go.
Mayor, going back to number four, what's your take on that? They don't have any dates and times?
No, I think they just provide more information, I don't think that, I don't think I have too much to add.
Right. Starting to get, grants are starting to get high in several areas that we're already covered this year, Swan in Sixth, Wicked House, by Middle School, Spohberg, 100 Block, Third Street again, it's not crazy now, but I love you, it's going to be like we're going into September. Roosevelt, 600 Block.
We are going to 110.
Thank you.
Councilman Stoya? Okay, councilwoman? All right, I don't have anything either, let's go on to unfinished business?
None, sir.
Prefiled.
Number seventy, resolution authorizing renewal agreement with State of New York Unified Court System, April 1st, 2022 to March 31st, 2023.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, I, I know that the New York State Unified Court System basically shifts judicial administration from local control to centralized management, I wanted to ask Attorney Morris Rowe what is meant by city court cleaning and minor repairs, does it mean if New York State gives money to municipalities to allow court to be in our city hall, or?
So, just to clarify, essentially, the court system now is controlled by the state, it's no longer a function of city budget, doesn't run through city, doesn't fall under the purview of the council anymore, so in essence, the court is a tenant, the unified court system is a tenant of the city of Dunkirk, so this is a cleaning contract to essentially pay for Lou, who's the janitor of the building, to reimburse our cost for the time Lou spends cleaning the court, that's all it is, this is an annual renewal, and we've been doing this since the state took over the court system.
Amazing, okay.
Yeah.
It also includes all this supplies and everything else that you use.
Exactly.
The upper issue.
Yeah. It's the same, no, just to clarify, so the court guards, we have the same principle applied, they pay us, they reimburse the police department for the cost of having those two officers essentially be the court guards, whereas in larger court systems, they have their own force, or they contract out, let's say, the county sheriff's office or something of that nature, so here we have the two court guards, they're on our payroll, but they reimburse us for their salaries, and that's a contract that comes up every now and then.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, seventy-one?
Um, I was told this was, seventy-one was going to be pulled?
Yes, that one's going to be withdrawn, it's, it's too early in the process to seek a resolution.
Okay.
So, we have walk-on, resolution number seventy-one, it is a request for ARFA stimulus fund use allocation. This was the new one, the walk-on, so that'll be forwarded out to bring it on and then board it out to the section.
Okay, that's all we've got there. New business?
Walk-on, the walk-on wasn't in there.
Yeah, technically falls under new business.
Correct. Okay, go ahead. Anything else under the business? If not, can I have a motion to?
No. Stoya, second by Nichols. Councilmember Escovia?
Hi.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoya?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols? Councilmember Alaric D'Amico?
Aye, adjourned.
She'll get in a half hour.
I don't like seeing that.
When you stop.
For the monthly meeting, August 1st, 2022, at 5:30 PM.
Councilmember Lescoviac?
Here.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Here.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember Alarz D'Amico?
Here. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Certification with prior meeting? This is to certify that an official copy of the minutes of the common council meeting of Tuesday, July 19, 2022, was presented to the mayor on Monday, July 25, 2022. Pursuant to Section 3.03 of the Dunkirk City Charter, all items presented to the mayor are now in full force and effect, and witness where I have here to set my hand and the seal of the City of Dunkirk, New York this first day of August, 2022.
Can I have a resolution dispensing with the reading in the minutes?
Show move.
Second.
Nichols with a second by Stoyl.
Councilmember Lescoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alarz D'Amico?
Aye, carried.
Reading on privilege of the floor regulations.
The privilege of the floor shall be extended to any person appearing for themselves, in which case that individual shall be limited to three minutes, and to any person representing a group who shall be limited to five minutes. When recognized, please state, stand, state your name and address. The city clerk shall have the duty of maintaining such time limits, and the councilman at large may determine in his discretion whether individuals are speaking for themselves or representing groups. Councilmember Alarz D'Amico shall maintain good order and may require any speaker to cease speaking if remarks are made in bad taste, or are slanderous, or non-der maintain any action taken or contemplated by council. The time limit specified shall be strictly adhered to, except that a speaker may be allowed to complete a statement or thought started before such time has expired.
Privilege of the floor is now open. You should go. Thank you. Paul Somerfeldt, Brooks Avenue, Dunkirk, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Department of Public Works. I'd like to thank you guys for addressing the issue I brought up in email last week. And another issue I have is with the recent redirecting of traffic off of Brigham Road. There are a lot of cars going down Brooks Avenue, West Second Street, Nichols Avenue. And in the little time I've been outside, I've noticed that there have been at least two vehicles blowing through the stop signs. And secondly, because there's a playground there, I think that there should be at least a temporary sign indicating that there are children at play in the area. Some of the vehicles go through there pretty quickly, and I've noticed a reduction in the use of the playground because of the traffic there, so some people are adjusting at their playtimes because of that hazardous area that's become obvious to at least us neighbors. Thank you.
Mike, or Randy, how long is that thing up Brigham Road gonna last?
I would say another week.
At the most, and full disclosure, that detour and everything else was set up by a third party. That's what they do, Comet Flasher, they do, this is what they do. They submitted a detour map to us, and it was forwarded to police and fire so that they were aware of everything, and it should be wrapped up, we're hoping, within a week.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Floor still open? Anyone else would like to speak? Not only once, going twice, third time, closed. Communication with the mayor, including disapproval messages. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to remind the public and the council that tomorrow is National Night Out here in the City of Dunkirk. It's at Washington Park. The official start time is 6:30, and the public is welcome to come. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Communication from the public and petitions.
Number one, request from the Dunkirk Midget Football League to have their annual Dunkirk Midget Football Tag Days fundraiser on Saturday, August 20, 2022, from 9:00 AM until 1:00 PM at the intersections of Central Avenue and Fifth Street and on West Dodie Street near the fire hall.
Any discussion, council? Okay, if not, I need a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as approval subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions. I got a motion by Councilmember Bemanto, with a second, and I had by, I believe it was Nichols.
Councilmember Lescoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alarz D'Amico?
Aye, carried.
Number two, request from the Dunkirk City School District for police coverage for the Dunkirk Senior High School 2022 varsity football season on September 9th and 23rd, and October 7th and 14th, from 7:00 PM until 10:00 PM.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, can I make a motion to refer to the PBA?
Sure.
I got Bemanto and a second by Lescoviac.
Councilmember Lescoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alarz D'Amico?
Aye, carried.
Number three, request from Elizabeth Naraway of the nonprofit organization Impact to hold a 5K run fundraiser along the waterfront on September 10, 2022, at 9:00 AM.
Any discussion, council?
Whereas in the workshop, we're gonna find out more information on this, and then get back to the chief.
Chairman, I was asked to contact the organization to get more information on their routes.
You wanna make a motion to table, to the next meeting?
Yeah, we have time, since it's till September 10. Yes.
Exactly. I got a motion by Nichols to table?
Second.
Second, and by Stoyl.
Councilmember Lescoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alarz D'Amico?
Aye, carried.
Number four, request from James Thomas Jr. of the Jehovah Witness to set up two tables, carts under the viaduct on Central Avenue and in the future at local parks and the pier grounds.
Any discussion, council?
Again, there's no dates that are given as to when they plan on doing this, so it's almost like they can do it anytime that they wish to do it, and in the workshop, we decided that more information should follow, so we probably should table this one as well.
Okay, so you're making a motion to table?
I am.
I got, hold on.
Along with the dates, we'd like to know their times, and what they wanna, what times they wanna do it, that block of time.
Absolutely.
I'll push the table it also.
Clerk could, yeah, take care of that for us, please?
I could.
Okay, you got a motion by Nichols, and a second by Bemanto, to table.
Councilmember Lescoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols? Councilmember Alarz D'Amico?
Aye, carried.
Notice of claim from Marshal Nesmith of Fredonia for alleged damages to his car from a manhole cover on Lake Shore Drive East and South Servo Street on July 15, 2022.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, can I have a motion to refer to law and DPW? I got Lescoviac?
Nichols.
Seconded by Nichols.
Councilmember Lescoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alarz D'Amico?
Aye, carried.
Number six, prior written notice from Elizabeth Campbell on a hazardous tree at 421 Park Avenue.
Any discussion, council?
Now, just in the workshop, I had asked to see if it was on the list already, that we have a standing list of tree cuttings for the city, and Mr. Woodbury, and Mike said that they would check to make sure if it was on the list or not and address it as needed.
Okay. Okay, can I have a motion to refer to Law Department and DPW?
Show move.
Nichols, seconded by Lescoviac.
Councilmember Lescoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alarz D'Amico?
Aye, carried.
Number seven, prior written notice from Ferdinand Tardi of 55 Lemming Street of a dangerous tree dropping branches near his living room window and in the street near cars.
Any discussion, council?
Same as number six, to see if it's on the cut-down list?
Okay.
And address accordingly.
Okay, can I have a motion to refer to the Law Department and DPW?
Show move.
I got Stoyl's with a second by Nichols.
Councilmember Lescoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alarz D'Amico?
Aye, carried.
Number eight, loudspeaker permit request from the Lakeside Club to use the live band on August 13th and 14th, 2022, from 1:00 PM until 5:00 PM for a fundraiser.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as approval subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions?
Show move.
I got Stoyl, seconded by Bemanto.
Councilmember Lescoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alarz D'Amico?
Aye, carried.
Number nine, loudspeaker permit request from Nathan Swanson to use multiple speakers and amplifiers for live music at the Fairgrounds Mini-Stage on September 17, 2022, during a music festival.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, are we gonna, hate to bring this up, are we gonna have to have the police up there to check out decibels or anything, or what, I mean, they got multiple speakers, multiple this, multiple?
We start to get a lot of complaints on it. We'll address it after it's turned around, and if not, the city called it, we feel that is still outrageous, we can't show it.
Thank you, chief.
Chief, was there any issues this week, weekend? Thank you.
Good. Okay, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as approval subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions?
Show moved.
Councilwoman Lescoviac, seconded by Bemanto.
Councilmember Lescoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alarz D'Amico?
Aye, carried.
Reports of standing committees, boards, and commissions, Councilwoman Lescoviac?
Yes, I again would like to mention to First Ward citizens and all citizens of Dunkirk that I do take care of issues that are presented to me. I, luckily, I visit, I work right across the street, and I visit City Hall a few times a week and have connections with the different departments. Therefore, I don't need to ask questions here at the council meeting, but please do feel free to contact me, and we will find the remedy for any issue, or call just to talk and let me know what you would like to see different in our city, as it is my constituents that I am accountable to. And I'd like to reiterate what the mayor said about the National Night Out. It's an event tomorrow night at Washington Park from 6:30 to 8:15. McGruff the Crime Dog will be there, Music by the Rising at the gazebo, and the Encanto movie at dusk. And I wanted to ask Chief Ortalano if he wanted to add about tomorrow night's event?
Sure. I'm looking forward to it. This is our largest community-based event that we do. We have a great turnout every year, with the police department, fire department involved. Everyone, the mayor, the council, city administration people will be there, the bounce houses, Frank Beach will either with the Rising, the police force every year. The movie will start about 8 o'clock when it gets dark, and we could not enjoy the success that we have in the police department without the support of the community behind us, so it's a great program for everyone to come out, meet our officers and our firefighters, and just enjoy an evening. Majority of the time, we deal with anybody or situations in law enforcement, it's not in a positive manner. This is a night where our officers and our people can get out in a positive manner and enjoy relating with people in the community, from our children all the way up to our senior citizens. So we encourage everyone to come out and have a really good time with us tomorrow night.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Bemanto?
Yeah, so last Thursday, we had a finance meeting. We moved some money around and allocated some money for the needs for the city. I'd like to thank everybody on the board here that contributed to that. We worked together on it. Thank the mayor, Marc, Marcia, Kate, and we all got together and got things done, and that's progress for the city. Also, I'd like to make an announcement. This Friday, the annual, 12th annual Dunkirk Cardinal Menzany Fredonia Alumni Golf Tournament we held at Shorewood Country Club. This is the 12th year that the monies from that go to Dunkirk Little League Boys and Girls, Fredonia Little League Boys and Girls, and to our camp in Dunkirk, City of Dunkirk. Some money goes there. And another note, my brother, Bill Bemanto, organized this and started it 12 years ago. This will be his last year organizing it, and I'd like to thank him for all the years doing it. Not only did some of this fundraising go to some of our things in the city for our youth, but also a lot of these people that come in out of town, they plan their whole weekend around this tournament, and they come and spend nights in the hotels and spend money here, and they have their reunions, family reunions, high school reunions, all involved around this. So I'd like to thank him, his volunteers, his wife, for all the years of helping out the city and doing this tournament. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Stoyl?
Like everyone before me, I wanna make sure everybody knows about Night Out. Dave's been a wonder, he's done a wonderful job for the last 29 years, and I wanna thank you for that, Dave. And especially to the council, I went last year, and I got to meet more new officers, 'cause I'm kinda from the old school, I knew all the old guys, but I met Dave, took me around, introduced me to the new officers, and there are more to meet this year. It's a continuing progress in that department, and God bless him. So again, thank you, Dave, and I hope everybody comes out. My granddaughters are looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to it, so join us and meet a lot of people. And I won't forget my old friends from the fire department. They'll be there, too. That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nichols?
And I would just add and chime in on Judge, it is truly a family-oriented event, and it's just, please, don't send your children, bring the whole family. And I believe Josh Latona with Ryan Hauer working on a movie that they're gonna be doing?
I have a movie that Ryan Hauer is planning to set it up at Shore.
And Josh, as he did last year? Didn't Josh Latona do it last year?
Uh, he's a recreation.
Yeah, well, Josh is the one that does all the promoting on it and everything, and he's, he knows how to do all the technical stuff, so I think he's in charge of that. I've had a lot of jajas and bushas call me and ask me if we can possibly shake the money tree in the backyard, to see if we can find some extras to put benches down by the splash park down there. There is some, as I said, jajas and bushas that bring their grandchildren down, and they're standing, they're not thinking of bringing a lawn chair with them. First of all, they probably couldn't carry it, but they would just like to sit there 'cause the kids wanna spend at least an hour and a half to two hours, sometimes three, having fun down there, and if there's any surplus that we have, even a bench, I don't know, if you can answer that for me, Mike?
We could, we could see what we could come up with. I think I have a couple ideas for that already.
Well, they just don't wanna send their children, children by themselves down there. They wanna be supervising them.
Yeah.
If I could add to that, I'd like to remind people that we have a memorial bench program that's very popular, and it's a nice way to put a longstanding tribute to a loved one. We have them throughout Point Graciate, for example, and there are some in other areas. Now that we've pretty much saturated Point Graciate with those, they're very popular, I think Wright Park would be a good place to have that. So if people wanna, wanna come in and do a memorial bench and see Pam and DPW, we'll get that started, and those benches can circle the splash pad. You get to pick wherever you want it, but we're kinda, kinda, I think that you bring out a good point, that that's, Wright Park hasn't been addressed. What the mayor's done at Wright Park to make it so popular is a problem that we like having, and this will be a solution that we could do without, you know, we can, we could shake the money tree if we want. Mostly, we gotta cut those trees down, but we, but we will, one way or another.
He thinks they're all partying.
But we'll get it done.
Thank you, Andy and Mike. Now that the Fourth Ward's brush collection is ended for July, the, our workers are feverishly out there picking up all the storm-related branches in the First Ward, so, but it's just not, just don't add to it if it wasn't storm-related, please don't put it out, 'cause our, our next brush collection is not going to be until September. There's a problem that we're having down by the boardwalk. The lovely people that come down, they're the musicians that play down at the end of the boardwalk on Friday, are having competitions by the hot dog stand that's across the street. It is very, very, very loud with whatever, their boombox or whatever they're, they're using to magnify the music, and there's been a lot of complaints about it, that the people are sitting there listening to the lovely choice of musicians that come down there, but they have this back, the feedback from across the street, and it is, I did go down Friday, it is very, very loud. I don't believe we gave him a loudspeaker permit to do that, so I don't know how we can address that issue. It's just, it's just on Friday nights, and it's when our, when our, our band down there plays. Yeah, I could go down and talk to them. That's not an issue. Thank you, thank you. I think that's it, Judge. You okay with this?
All right. Tonight, too, again, I hope everybody shows up tomorrow night, supports the National Night Out. Let's move on unfinished business.
None, sir.
Let's go to prefiled resolutions, number 70.
Number 70, resolution authorizing renewal agreement with State of New York Unified Court System, April 1st, 2022, to March 31st, 2023.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none?
Councilmember Lescoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alarz D'Amico?
Aye, carried.
Sir, number 71, original 71 has been pulled. Sir, number 71, original 71 has been pulled. The new 71 is a walk-on, you need a vote to bring it on.
We gotta make a motion to pull.
All right, so...
They pulled it. Oh, you pulled it, automatically.
So I need a motion for a walk-on, number 71. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Seconded by Stoyl?
Councilmember Lescoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large D'Amico?
Aye, carried.
Okay, number 71, resolution authorizing ARPA stimulus fund used allocation.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none?
Councilmember Lescoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large D'Amico?
Aye, carried.
Is there anything else in new business?
No, sir.
If not, can I have a motion to it, sir? Okay, I got a motion by Nichols?
Second.
Seconded by Stoyl?
Councilmember Lescoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember D'Amico?
Aye.